Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council meeting. This is a regularly scheduled council meeting, and we'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, October 13th, 2020. The time is 5:32 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Freely.
Here.
Paulson.
Present.
Beyondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Barneselli.
Here.
Cuffey.
President, thank you. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just a reminder for everyone this evening, Pam has asked me once again to remind anyone who's speaking this evening and all of us elected officials sitting at our desks to please speak loud enough and clearly enough in the microphone so she can hear to take the minutes. So, thank you. Well, move to item three on the agenda. 3.1 is a proclamation, Recognizing National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Whereas Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated, also known as IRIS, and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy through early childhood. And whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die in, or bury a child in our community. And whereas Infants Remembered in Silence is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that was founded in 1987, 33 years ago, to offer support for parents whose child or children died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexplained death of his child, also known as SUDC, sudden infant death syndrome, known as SIDS, illness, accidents, and all other types of infants and early childhood death. And whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on this, on the date of October 15th with candle lighting at 7:00 PM. Some will remember their children or their child in their homes, while others will remember them in small gatherings around the state, across the nation, and around the world. And this would unify these parents in tribute to their children. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And whereas in honor of the thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, Infants Remembered in Silence respectfully requests that October 15th, 2020 be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Mayor of this city of Virginia and on behalf of the city council and all residents, adopt this proclamation on October 13th, 2020, and proclaim this month as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Month and October 15th as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Okay, we'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to come and speak before the city council. So I have this opportunity, anyone in the audience would like to come forward to the city council and speak at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item five, which is the Consent Agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councilor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on September 22nd, 2020, and the special meetings held on September 22nd and September 29th, 2020. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 20-019, the Schedule of Bills. Item 5.3 is approve the following travel requests. Item 5.3A for Police Officer Jason Picard to attend the Fundamentals of Report Writing Online Webinar at a cost of $125. Item 5.3B, approve the travel request for the Fire Department for Stephanie Smith and Connor Grigsby to attend the Company Officers Academy in Brooklyn Park, Minnesota, on October 26th through the 29th, 2020, at a cost of $175 each. And lastly, on the Consent Agenda, item 5.5, approve the following pay estimates for the MECC project. That's the Miners Event and Convention Center project. Item 5.5A, Pay Estimate #4 for the UN's Field Redevelopment to Cross Anderson in the amount of $529,459.91. And item 5.5B, Payestimate #4 for the MECC building itself, the project itself, to Cross Anderson, in the amount of $1,090,838.87. These are the Consent Agenda items that are proffered today at the council meeting, and I will seek for council action. Counselor Johnson.
Mayor, can we pull 5.3A just for a question?
Okay. Counselor Johnson requested item 5.3A be removed from the approval of the Consent Agenda for further discussion.
And I'll move the rest.
And Counselor Johnson moves the approval of the rest of the Consent Agenda items. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move back to item 5.3A, which is a travel request. Well, actually, it's not a travel request, it's an online seminar for Police Officer Jason Picard to attend the Fundamentals of Report Writing Online Webinar at a cost of $125. Counselor Johnson.
And that's, my question is, why are we, why do we need to approve a webinar request as opposed to a travel request? What, why? Okay, I just think it's just one of those things that it's, it's in a budget and they're sitting probably downstairs. I've just seen that come up a couple times, so I was curious to know if that was needed to do, or if it was just something we're used to doing because it's a training. Okay. All right, thank you. I'll move 5.3A.
And thank you. 5.3A has been moved for approval on the Consent Agenda by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
All support.
All support.
Support by Counsel Paulson. Further discussion, just quickly, usually these are not online webinars for report writing, usually these are in a classroom, but due to the COVID-19, it's now on the webinar form, I guess I'm not sure how effective that is, but apparently it is, so, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item six, appearances. We have two items on the agenda, two appearances scheduled this evening. Item 6.1 is Mr. Thomas Bain from Amoresco Energy Efficiency Project Update. Mr. Bain, good evening, welcome to the city council, and this is a very exciting project. It looks like it's nearing, it's the end of the construction phase of it, and we're moving forward with a significant amount of cost savings.
That is true. Yeah, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and city council members and staff members. I am actually not Tom Bain, I am Eric Lawmeyer, that's okay. Tom Bain is in the audience, but he graciously told me to come up here and speak on his behalf.
Okay.
I apologize for that. No problem, not at all. So, yeah, so we, you know, we were up here basically about a year ago, I was looking at some of the notes that we were taking, and basically in October of 2019, we were up here presenting to you guys, looking at the different options that we have, the different financial options, how are we going to be able to make this work? And so, you know, obviously, a year goes by really fast, and we thought that the project went by really fast, it was a successful project, and so we're here today just to present back to you that the project is complete, all the work has been done, and we just wanted to provide a few different highlights of the project. So, total cost of the project was $2.5 million. There was no capital contribution from the city. There was a contribution from the Virginia Public Utilities, as you remember, that helped the project cash flow actually really, really well, it was a nice contribution from the Virginia Public Utilities. So, some of the main highlights is that all 12 facilities received an LED upgrade to their lights. Sure. There you go. Is that, is that better? All right. It sounds loud to me right now, so. So, yeah, all 12 facilities had LED upgrades to their lights. We also did building envelope improvements, HVAC upgrades to the heating and cooling systems, and we did building automation control upgrades, so, all of which are going to be able to help you guys become more energy efficient and hopefully improve the occupant comfort. And obviously, I know this room, I believe, was done before our project, but, you know, the lighting is really nice in here, and so hopefully that's duplicated throughout the rest of the facilities in the, in the city. So, a year ago, I believe you guys had about $450,000 in energy spend for your 12 city facilities plus your streetlights. Through this project, Amoresco has been able to save the city about $108,000 annually, and so that includes the operation and maintenance side of it. I think it's about $93,000 in annual energy savings and an additional $20,000 in O&M. And a big portion of that is just going out and replacing lights from the streetlights, the interior stuff, upgraded HVAC systems, obviously you're not going to have to call your technicians to make as many improvements or tech visits for those assets as well. So, we thought it was, again, a really solid project, and hopefully you guys thought the same as well. I just wanted to provide a few more things, and then we can kind of get on. We do have two videos. One is going to be of the streetlight project, it's going to show before and after. I don't know if you guys have seen these, and then there's drone footage of the, the city hall lights, the exterior city hall lights, the colored lights. So I think that's, yeah, and that's, I think that's a really cool feature that we added to the project after initial stages of it. So, so thank you to Mayor Cuffey and city council members, we appreciate your support. So, thank you to Britt and Bill and Kurt from the staff, they were involved in a lot of the day-to-day activities, so we appreciate everything that they did to help move the project forward. Again, thank you to the Virginia Public Utilities for their contribution and their work, especially Greg French. And then, on the Amoresco side, I just want to thank Corey Freeman, he's our engineer that helped develop the project, and then Tom Bain, who was supposed to get up here and talk, but wanted me to. And so, he was part of the project management team that helped make this process go by nice and smoothly. So, with that, I'll let you guys, we're going to show two videos, again, they're about two minutes long. If you guys have any questions, let me know, but thank you again for the, for this project, it's been really fantastic for us.
Okay, thank you. Britt, you'll be executing each video? Okay, well, thank you, that was, that's impressive, particularly the cupola, the laying the cupola. I just have one question, if you could just, for the general public certification, the difference between the LED lights, the lighting we had before, what's the lifespan on those? They have a lot longer lifespan, these LED lights, correct?
Yeah, so the LEDs are going to have a lot longer lifespan, usually depending on the run hours, but they'll, they'll last 25 or 30 years if, depending on the run hours, but yeah, long life cycle.
Very good, thank you very much, and that's part of the OMM savings as well, too, so thank you. Any questions for the Amoresco staff? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, I have a few comments. When it comes to the HVAC, the heating and cooling, the most notable things I've seen is the basement, the northeast corner in the basement, that's where the steam comes into the building, and no matter spring, summer, fall, you couldn't walk in that room without breaking a sweat, and now it's a regular room, so there's a very tangible thing. When our lights first got changed, citizens were noticing how bright things were. I noticed out my window, the lights in the middle of the block now illuminate the entire block, so our citizens have noticed those things too, so it's been very noticeable. And just as a note, the lights on the cupola will be changed monthly, the staff is developing a policy, so that if your club or organization would like them changed for a period of time, that is something that you can submit a form for, and the staff will be criteria set up. So, October is set up for Rest Cancer Awareness Month, and we have a show program for Halloween that, and the stuff we can do, several of us are trained in how to change the lights up there, and the stuff we can do up there is amazing, so. And again, that's, that's one of those things that not many cities can talk about, is being able to honor people or events, so, appreciate it, this has been something I've wanted to see happen overall. It's one of my checklists when I got elected the first time, was to help the city become more energy efficient, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Paulson, any questions or comments for the Amoresco team?
No, thank you so much.
Counselor Beyondich?
No, I'm good as well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Barneselli?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several phone calls, probably a month ago, for how nice that looks. When you're coming from Elworth, my brother-in-law is, lives in Elworth, he thinks Elworth is the only city up here on your range, but I said, "You don't have a light like we have on our," he says, "Really looks nice," so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Barneselli. Okay, thank you very much. We have a gentleman in the audience that'd like to speak on this particular matter. Please step forward. Oh, please, turn on the microphone, please, state your name for the record, for all, for everybody.
Joe Caulfield, Joe and Kathy Caulfield, over on Third and Third.
Good evening, Mr. Caulfield.
Good evening. And it really is handsome and eye-catching, and that leads me to ask the question of any chance that the archway at the city center park could get a treatment like this, so we could have changing lights and displays or something there? The old condensant ones, were hung upside down, kept shorting out, now we just have the arch, but no lighting, so if somewhere down the line, we have a few extra coins, that kind of treatment would, I think, be beautiful.
Well, let's place it on the administrative agenda for us to check that out, Mr. Caulfield.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming to the meeting this evening. Okay, anything else for the Amoresco team? Thank you very much, and move to item number 6.2 on the agenda, under appearances. Mr. Colby Abaz from Clean Energy Resource Teams regarding the Green Step Program. Mr. Abaz here. Mr. Abaz is on, on the phone. Good evening, Mr. Abaz, and welcome to the city council meeting.
Wonderful, thanks for having me, and it's too bad I can't be up there in person, I traveled up there a bunch before COVID, but it'll be fun to get back there, and I look forward to it once this COVID gets a little more under control, so. Well, I'll try to keep mine brief, I sent a couple documents ahead of time that you hopefully have in your packets. One is just a bunch of kind of testimonials from other cities and other city workers and administrators and representatives that I'm saying their experience with the Green Step Cities Program, and then the other one just kind of talks about a little bit of the Green Step Program, Cities Program, and its history, its benefits, and kind of how you would join it. And so, you can follow along with those as I talk, so you can have some pretty colors. So, the Green Step Cities Program is voluntary, it's self, oh, can you all hear me? Oh, I'm echoing, okay, so, I'll just echo to myself then, that's fine. But yeah, it's voluntary, self-paced, it's free to join, so there's no cost for you all. Part of the program, you get technical assistance by various partners that are involved with the program, and it's really designed to be a recognition of your peers and a way of kind of continuous improvement and providing a roadmap for that. And so, it's structured as an assistance and recognition program for accelerating sustainability actions for cities, and there are a couple tribal nations as well that are being kind of experimented with. It's broken up into 175 specific actions within 29 best practice areas, and that's to kind of understand that every city's different, and so what works for one city might not work for another city, and to give you a lot of flexibility within kind of the framework of accomplishments to identify where your city wants to go. So, there, one of the best practice categories is buildings and lighting, one is land use, one is transportation, one is environmental management, and one is economic and community development. And all those have kind of subcategories and lots of little actions within that, all of which can be detailed out in much detail on the website. And a cool thing, even if you're not a part of the Green Step Cities Program, you go to the website and kind of find a relevant best practice action, there's always a little face and contact info on the right-hand side that lists the expert that can provide support and information about that topic. And so that's definitely a nice way that I use sometimes to connect with people and find, well, who's the person to talk to about XYZ issue? And unfortunately, there isn't a map on the documents you have, but the map actually looks like Minnesota with all the Green Step Cities that we have, even if you take away the lines, so that's pretty cool. We have 128 cities and three tribes, and it covers 48% of Minnesota's population. So, Green Step Cities is pretty proud of that, it's nonpartisan, both urban and rural are very active in it, and it's saved $8.4 million per year in the kind of actions that have been taken as part of it. Green Step Cities is a collaboration with a lot of different partners, it's kind of all centered around the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, but like Clean Energy Resource Teams, so CERTS, who I work for, is also heavily involved with it on outreach about it, but then also checking in with cities and providing support and connectors throughout whatever projects you want to do through the Green Step Cities Program. There's also a number of other partners who, I believe, are, all their logos are in the bottom of your Becoming a Green Step Cities document. So, why would you join Green Step programs? So, the idea with it is, if you want to pay more attention, be intentional, and accelerate action, and have assistance to do that, Green Step Cities would be a good fit. It also has support for kind of documenting your progress and it being able to kind of recognize and have numbers and anecdotal data for the actions you take, so that when your community members are asking you questions about it, you can show them and be like, "This is what we did, this is the effect it had," and have very tangible things to show for it, and you get cool little plaques for kind of the step of Green Step Cities that you achieve. We also like to share what works in different cities, and so Green Step Cities does a lot of collaboration events where we'll try to bring in different cities that are kind of going through similar challenges or working on similar best practices and be able to learn from each other. And so, more often than not, if you're trying to do something, you're struggling in a certain way, there's another city that's gone through that, and within the Green Step Cities Program, it's really easy to find those cities and connect up with someone that might have some answers to help you on that path. So, Green Step Cities is all about cost savings, how can you maybe spend a little bit more money upfront to invest in something that'll then save you a lot of money over the long term? It's about peer recognition, it's about helping improve the environment, and so, not just the trees and animals, although that is a fact as well, but also just the environment for people. Like, one of the big areas is walkable streets, like kind of different ways of how people get around and having a high quality of life. So, the Green Step Cities has five kind of recognition levels, and so, how you join the Green Step Cities Program is you pass a resolution, taking that challenge on, and so that's the first step, and I did send a sample resolution that can meet catered to your specific needs to your administrator, so that is something that you could use at this meeting or a future meeting, if you were to bring this up for consideration, and that gets you to step one. And then step two is achieved when you complete any of the eight of the best practice actions. And so, my understanding, talking with Eric, is that you very likely may already be able to achieve step two right away, just with the projects and work that his or group has been doing. And so that was kind of where this conversation started, was him reaching out to me and being like, "Oh, I'm doing all this great work, like, why not get it recognized? Why not try to have this be a snowball effect and something that can grow into something more?" Step three is a little bit more involved, and is 16 best practices, and there's also a few kind of high priority best practices that are kind of required from the selection of actions. And then four and five is where you get more, a lot more into the numbers and the tracking and kind of quantifying all the different kind of gains that are being made. And there are a few cities that have actually gotten all the way to step five so far, so that's pretty exciting. So, definitely, I hope to continue to be a resource for you through Green Step Cities, but also through any sort of clean energy work that you're doing, and so you can definitely reach out to me, I am the regional coordinator for CERTS, and so I cover the whole northeast area from Cook County over to I task area and down to Pine City. And I can be reached at colby@cleenenergyresourceteams.org, or by phone at 218-353-1448. And so, definitely, if you have anything you're thinking about doing, or anything you're in the process of, I would love to chat with you about it, that relates to clean energy. So, I would love to entertain any questions people have about Green Step Cities and the program, and would hope that, yeah, you'll look into it and think about it and consider passing a resolution to join the program. There are several different communities and cities in your area that are already There are several different communities and cities in your area that are already a part of the program. And so there is Mount Iron, which is right next door. There's Gilbert, and then there's Chisholm. So you'd be joining some lovely neighbors and be able to try to be the successful and healthy green city. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Abaz. Before we go to the council, I see we have some conversations or maybe some questions. I have one question for you. This is going to take a little bit more study for us to take a look at though, but the document that you provided kind of gives us some insight and access to your website. But the one question I have is the relationship that you alluded to earlier in your presentation about your partnership with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Meaning, what is the issue with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency? And how are they involved in the Green Step Program with respect to monitoring? Or what is their involvement or the relationship that a Green Step City would have with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency that could possibly be advantageous for the city?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency is basically the agency that was... Through legislature, when the Green Step Cities Program was adopted, was put in charge of carrying the work of the Green Step Cities Program. And so the kind of the core staff that operate and kind of maintain the Green Step Cities Program are within the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. But again, all the actions are voluntary. They're all self-directed. And so it's not like it's something where they're going to be auditing you or kind of checking and all those different things. It's meant to be a community-driven group. And it all came out of CERTS and a listening session with different cities and communities back in 2007, where the idea of kind of bringing communities together to assist each other and to kind of recognize who were the green stars, who were kind of achieving and something that could be learned from. And so then after that, it went to the legislature that was able to kind of get it supported and put it under the care of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And so there's, I think, about four staff that are at least part-time in the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency that work with the cities and provide you with support and with resources, and then also kind of just run the website and do some of that backend technical upkeep work. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Counselor Birbou.
Colby, on the same thought, that was one of my questions is going to be about the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. We have our own public utilities here in the city of Virginia. And we're already monitored. And my question is, with this program, are the monitoring standards going to become more stringent and different with cities going to the green steps? Or are they going to continue with the same standards that are out there now unless the legislature makes changes? Because that can cost a city a lot of money if they come in here and say, hey, you've got to have so many parts per million of lead, so many parts per million of this and that. So I'm a little concerned about this program that we can get locked into some things that can eventually cost us a lot of money that we cannot afford as a small city. So I would like to see all your 175 or whatever steps due in written form so we can actually take a look at them. It doesn't do that in this brochure.
Yes, no. And I do, yeah, if you check on the website, it has all the different best practices detailed out. And again, they're all kind of, you pick the ones that fit you and your situation. But to kind of answer your question, it's great. It's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that you're already tracking a lot of this stuff and already kind of looking at your energy use and kind of what you're doing as a community in regard to health and quality of life and the environment. And so this would, to a large degree, just be a way of doing that in a more collaborative way with other cities. And so it'd be a way of, instead of having a good, easy connection and way to connect to another city to learn how they're doing it that maybe inspires you or to share how well you're doing it and to get recognized for like the accomplishments you're making. And so that's really what the kind of program is about. And there's nothing that's required within it. Like, there's nothing in the program that would require you to take any particular actions, even after you've gotten a certain level. Like, the only thing at risk is you don't get a higher level of recognition. And so like, if you've already achieved so much, but then life changes and adjustments have to be made, it's not, there's not going to be any barriers from the Green Step Cities Program.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think this deserves a little bit more investigation moving forward, but the gist of your presentation gives us pause to look at, you know, this as a possibility moving forward from our staff and committee. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Having attended the annual conference of the Minnesota League of Minnesota Cities every year, this is one of the parts of the dinner that people pay attention to. They look at this. They see cities being leaders. They see people moving forward. I have a couple comments, but I do have a very pointed questions. Within the MPCA, is there any connection between the Green Steps Program and the monitoring and enforcement of MPCA rules and regulations?
No, there is not.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I pulled up, I went to the website while we've been sitting here, and I pulled up the Excel spreadsheet that has all of these points listed. They're right here, easy to read, starting at the number, the fourth part. Fourth, efficient outdoor lighting and signals has eight points. Number one, require energy-efficient dark sky compliant new replacement outdoor lighting fixtures, city-owned property, private buildings and fixtures. We're working on that. We've just done that for all of our city-owned stuff. Purchase LED lights for future street lighting and traffic signals. That's done. Replace the city's existing street lighting with dark compliant LEDs. That's done. Coordinate traffic signals. That's done. Use LED, I mean, the stuff we've already done as a city, it's amazing what we've already done even prior to doing the Ameresco contract. There is nothing in this that binds us to anything. And I can say that because I've talked to the Green Step Cities in person for the last three years at the annual conference. I've done my own research a year ago, and I printed out and did the checklist before Ameresco. The only thing we're not getting is people going, great job. The only thing we're not getting is the benefit of saying yes as we're looking at the miners, which is going to do wonderful things for this checklist. The only thing we're not getting is being able to, when we apply for future grants, saying, we've already done all this work. Here's our proof. Will you give us some more money so that we can do more stuff to make the city more compliant? The tougher stuff on the list is using electric vehicles as opposed to fossil fuel vehicles. That's some stuff on the list. That's a tougher one. But as we're looking forward and moving forward and purchasing vehicles, having this and being able to possibly get grants to purchase capital equipment because of being Green Step compliant and having the rating one, two, or three, I just, there's nothing in this that I can see, especially since there is no connection between the enforcement and the voluntary program. I can't see this. We're even looking at hiring a city planner. A city planner would probably be the person that would help to look through this and be aware of these things as we're moving forward, as we're looking at code, as we're getting businesses to come into Virginia. And who knows, this energy, Green Step City stuff may even get businesses that want to be a part of that to move in that we haven't thought about. So I think this is a great opportunity for the city to move forward. I think it's a great opportunity for us to toot our own horn. We've done so much work, and we don't give ourselves any credit. And I think this is a great way to start that. So I am 100% in favor of this and us moving forward with it. Thank you.
No, thank you. And it's really nice to hear you've already been looking at the list and seeing kind of what steps you've already achieved because that really is something that, for me, I really appreciate, where it brings all that into one place. And so it's like a little bit of work to kind of gather all that information. But then you have this one source, you have your own kind of page on the website that says, here's all the things we've accomplished relating to kind of a greener city and a healthier city and a more enjoyable city to live in. And it just really puts those in the same place. So it's easy to find and looks good for, yeah, grant applications and things like that. And it is also like kind of referencing some of the harder things like electric vehicles and things like that. For the most part, it's all about how, have you improved on what you were before? It's less about, well, here's the target you're trying to meet. Here's like XYZ. Because we understand that like every city is different. And so it's all about kind of improving on like where were you at and kind of how can you improve from there and then recognizing it when you are successful.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abaz. Counselor Paulson, any questions or comments regarding the Minnesota Green Step Cities presentation by Mr. Abaz?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I really appreciate the presentation, and I look forward into reviewing the information on the website. I just am curious. I think we should have maybe had this on the committee of the whole so we could have a little bit broader discussion and, you know, maybe go through some of that. So I'm just curious as to how that got put on the agenda today, tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I know relating to that is that with Eric kind of talking about the projects he's been working on and his group has been working on, he wanted me to join him and kind of see, talking about Green Step Cities as a way that you could move forward and continue on the work that had been done with that. And so, yes, I agree. I think this does deserve more nuanced or just kind of evolved conversation. And I would be happy to come to one of your meeting of the whole or committee of the whole sessions, as you called them. And, yeah, talk with you there and/or, yeah, talk with your administrators or whoever makes sense to kind of get through the nuts and bolts of it. And, yeah, basically, the steps initiated are just to kind of, yeah, have a conversation, make sure you know what you're getting into. And I can talk with you myself. And then there's also other more expert Green Step Cities people that can talk with you as well. And then usually it just involves the, only ask from you really is having a staff member, a person that's the designated point of contact. And then we actually oftentimes encourage you to create or assign the holding and carrying the work of the Green Steps Program to a community group or to a committee you have within your city or kind of some group that can help carry the work and not have it be a burden that you're all thinking about as a council as well, where it's really the whole community, find those people that are engaged with this and give them a forum to do that work in.
Great. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Biondich, any questions for Mr. Abaz?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Abaz. And we'll be discussing this further, I'm sure, at staff and council level. So anything else?
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Abaz before we move to the next agenda item? No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Abaz.
Thank you, and I look forward to hearing from you and taking this conversation forward.
Hey, thanks again. Okay, we'll move to item seven on the agenda, which is unfinished business. Item 7.1, this is the second reading. Approve the sale of city property located on Third Avenue North, which is parcel code number 090-0010-00020 and 000300040 to Karma Sepa. And this property is located near Bailey's Lake along in Third Avenue area, near a beautiful home that was invested in several years ago and would be another addition to that area. So this is for a new construction home, hopefully, and the sale is the second reading. So I'm looking for, I see Ms. Sepa is in the crowd. I don't, if you have any questions, you certainly may come and ask if you like. We're going to be taking action. We've approved it at the first reading and approved the second reading at committee level to be moved forward to the council meeting for the final approval for the purchase of this property. So I'm looking for any action from the council. Counselor Johnson.
I'll move the second and final reading of the sale of the property.
I'll support, Mayor.
I will second.
Whoever.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Johnson and seconded by Counselor Biondich and third by Counselor Birbou to approve the sale of the city-owned properties of those parcel codes I alluded to earlier to Karma Sepa. Congratulations. We hope this is successful. Is there any further discussion?
Rick, you'll take care of all the work with the attorneys for the transfer and everything?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we're going to vote right now, and you're welcome to come up and speak if you like, Ms. Sepa. Well, thank you for those kind words. So it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item eight on the agenda, which are discussion items. Item 8.1 is from the minutes from the planning and zoning meeting that was held on October 5, 2020. Item 8.1, variance request for Jason Slattery at 1102 Seventh Street South. There are four variance requests under this, four sections to this variance request. Item 8.1A, a 152-square-foot variance to the maximum rear yard coverage 30%, which is 804 square feet, in order to construct an auxiliary storage facility. And then item 8.1B, a 3.5-foot variance to the 5-foot required side yard setback in order to construct a new carport. And item 8.1C, an 18.5-foot variance to the required 20-foot setback a budding city right-of-way, which is Wolf Road, in order to construct a new carport 1.5 feet from the city right-of-way on Wolf Road. And finally, item 8.11D, a variance from the Virginia City Code, Chapter 11, to allow two garage structures for a single residential parcel. These are the variance recommendations that were moved forward for approval from our planning and zoning meeting on October 5 and looking for council action on 8.11A, B, C, and D.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the variance requests for planning and zoning. Is there support?
Support.
A support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8.2 is adopt the resolution number 20149 as per requested revisions from St. Louis County. And this resolution, 8.2, would you give a little bit more information for the general public, Rick, on the updated resolution, what the resolution changes are for this from St. Louis County, what it means? Thank you.
They asked that we change the language instead of saying purpose of public use as a park, that we say public purpose of a trail.
Okay, that's the only change.
Two different statutes. And so they asked us to use the trail statute.
Okay, we're going to use the trail statute, which is amenable to all of us, right? Okay, thank you.
That is the intended use.
It is the intended use for the trail. So that's a good clarification for the updated resolution. I'm looking for council action and approval.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Birbou. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.3, adopt a resolution to apply for and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety of Public Safety for the 2021 zero deaths enforcement for the police department. This is an annual grant, and we are the grant administrator for this project and is for the zero tolerance for enforcement of, of the traffic laws as outlined by the state of Minnesota. Looking for approval to adopt this resolution to apply and accept grants funding for it. Looking for council action.
So moved.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve, is there support? Support by Councilor, support by Councilor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8.4 is the approve a resolution for the city of Virginia to apply to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency brownfield assessment grant application and willingness to take the role of the fiscal agent for this project, which we've done for and in the past. So this is, we're looking to apply for funds from the brownfield through the EPA and as a grant and take the role of the fiscal agent for this project for our community and the surrounding communities that apply for these grants. Is there any action from the council to move to approve? Council Freely? Council Freely moves to approve, is there support?
I'll support Mayor.
Support by Councilor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion?
Can I have some discussion, Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you. It just, the project, what is, what is the project? Is there a designation for a specified project?
Well, I'll let our city administrator give the hold on.
If the grant is successful, each city needs to come forward with what their projects are. I believe the council is going to come forward with Northern Heights as their project. We, at the time of the grant application, we don't have to have that information, we have to have it if we're awarded.
Okay, so we don't have to specify a designate or designate a project, it's just being this fiscal agent and then when we procure a project, then we move forward.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Baraboo?
Britt, is this through the series board?
Yeah, Central Island Range Brownfield Coalition.
Okay, so it's like the other grants we've received in the past if we're successful.
Yeah, and also denied. The last two times we've been denied, so we're going to try again for the third time and hopefully.
It might be the good time.
Might be a good one.
Okay, thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then finally, item 8.5 is adopt a resolution to approve in entering into a contract with the Public Health and Human Services for the receipt of funding from St. Louis County Public Health Innovating Funding Program. And is this related to the collaboration between Range Mental Health and our EMS or is this a different program? This is what it is. Okay, so this is the resolution to approve to enter in a contract with the St. Louis County Public Health and Human Services for the receipt of funding from St. Louis County. And this is to coordinate mental health response and, and services between Range Mental Health, which is located in Virginia and our, our ALS, Advanced Life Support EMS system. So looking for approval to drop this resolution. Councilor Johnson?
I will move the resolution.
Councilor Johnson moves to approve this resolution, is there support? Support by Council? Who is that? Is that you, Councilor Biondich?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, Councilor Biondich supports. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's an appropriate time to point out that October is also Mental Health Awareness Month. So as we are moving forward with this and looking at the model that Eugene Oregon has put forward, I think this is, this is a great opportunity and getting this grant is just the start of something that will hopefully help not only the police department, but the fire department, the EMS, as well as general citizens who have, as, you know, I, we all have mental health challenges from time to time and we all have mental health. So it's a good, good opportunity as we move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Range Mental Health does, has a crisis intervention team already in place in the police department, tries to work closely with them and provide that services. This kind of grant funding will, will be able to enhance the services that are currently being provided and improve those services in Range Mental Health within our community. So is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to item nine, which is the committee reports. We have a lengthy discussion at committee of the whole meeting. So this is the committee of the whole meeting that was held on October 6th, 2020, and I graciously move the rest of this portion of our council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. At the committee of the whole meeting, we discussed the MECC project and change order PC0-2.0, which is the revised radon mitigation system. This was approved in an amount not to exceed $49,057.06.
Okay, we're looking for the adoption of a resolution to approve the MECC change order number PCO-2.0, the radon mitigation system, not to exceed $49,057.06, and it is within the contingency budget of the MECC project.
Also moved, Mayor.
Moved to approve by Councilor Baraboo, is there support? Support by Councilor Barnzelli, is there any further discussion?
I have some discussion, Mayor.
Yes, Councilor Paulson?
Oh, sorry, Mayor. Thank you so much. We did have extensive conversation at the committee level, and I did have some people that had contacted me that were interested in that information. And just for the public's edification, it's now uploaded to our city's YouTube channel, so they can go and review the extensive discussion that was had. And the change order, based upon the recommendation of DSGW, is the majority of that cost is on the HVAC system. So just for some clarification, and I'm good to go.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and supported. Everybody's aware now from Councilor Paulson that it has been uploaded to the YouTube channel. If you want some additional information, you can provide that or call our city clerk's office at 749-3579 to obtain a copy of the minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Britt?
Our next item on the agenda was we had a bid for the glass elevator at the MECC that was to be a stretcher size elevator. However, we did not receive any bids as the glass design is not available in stretcher size. So we have chosen to change the elevator to a standard type elevator that will accommodate a stretcher, which resulted in a decrease of the project cost by $10,835.36. And it was not supported to approve that MECC change order PCO3 elevator shaft revisions for deduction of $10,835.36.
I'll make that motion for the resolution of reduction on the change order.
Councilor Baraboo makes a motion to approve and a second by Councilor Biondich to adopt the resolution approving the MECC change order number PCO-3, which is the elevator shaft revisions for deduction of $10,835.36. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Britt.
For the MECC facility, we had to submit our plans to the Minnesota Department of Health, and due to some changes that they are requiring, we change order number PC0, PCO-4, which is plumbing plan revisions, was approved in the amount of $4,910.02.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson to approve, is there support? Support by Councilor Freely to adopt a resolution, MECC number PC0-4 plumbing plan revisions in the amount of $4,910.02, and all these change orders are within the budget of contingency. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Britt?
Eric Wedge was at our committee of the whole meeting to give an update on the curtain wall. To, bid package two was revised and created additional steel to be needed on the project, thus increasing the cost. Four colors were presented, and the bid specs included the lower price uncolored anodized steel, but the request was to use a colored anodized steel, which added an additional $9,000 to the project. The design team did meet and did review the colors. At the committee of the whole meeting, it was approved, it was approved to award or to authorize MECC change order PCO9-1, the curtain wall details, in the amount of $60,923.87. Review of the final recommendation on the color at this meeting today, and I do note that Councilor Paulson and Councilor Biondich are both on the design team, as well as Brian Silver and Eric Wedge, who are also here. So if any of them would like to give an update, that would be a great.
Okay, thank you. So let's look for a motion to approve or move on this resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Biondich makes the motion to approve the adoption of the resolution number PC0-9.1, this is curtain wall detail adjustment in the amount of $60,923.87. Is there support? Support by Councilor Barnzelli. Further discussion? Would someone from the design team like to make a little presentation regarding, before we vote, about the color scheme here? We have our, before us, our parking rec director, Brian Silver, who is part of the managing of the design team. Brian, welcome to the city council, and could you give us all an update about this?
Thank you. Yes, our design team did meet after last week's committee of the whole. We did review the original color in addition to the other colors that we chose and basically came back to the same conclusion that we had made originally and believed that the additional cost is well worth the investment, especially when you break it down for how little that additional cost is for how much we get, because this does impact every single window frame and door frame that we have on the exterior of the building, which is quite substantial. And I'll let Councilor Paulson and Councilor Biondich add anything that they would like at this point.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Moved to Councilor Paulson first, anything to add with respect to this change order?
No, not at this time. I, I think when we all met, we, we put the samples up in the sun and we walked around, and the black anodized really does stand out against the wall, so I, I think that's the, the right decision for the $9,000 upgrade. And then the rest of that, $60,000, well, less than $9,000, was for additional steel to support wind coming through to support that structure. So I think we had some extensive discussion and I feel very comfortable moving forward.
Thank you, Councilor Paulson. Councilor Biondich, any further comments?
Thank you. I can just echo what Councilor Paulson had stated. We did go back and look at the different samples again, and we thought that it was well worth putting that into this project to enhance the look of the facility. So I am comfortable with that change order. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. It's been moved and supported to adopt this resolution, change order number PC09.1, the curtain wall designed in the amount of $60,923.87 for the MECC project. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work the design committee put into it. I don't like the black, but I think you all have worked very hard, and I will be voting to support the decision made by the committee. Thank you.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Britt?
One final change order for the MECC. Brian Silver, Parking Recreation Director, noted the soil corrections were done. There was not enough good fill in the parking lot to the west. There would, requires an additional sand base be placed in the parking lot on the emergency road in the Plaza area in front of the building to allow for a compactable base. The funds for this change order, of course, would come out of the contingency funds. It was moved and supported to approve the MECC change order PC012-1, soil correction at West Lot Building, Ring Road, and Plaza in the amount of $134,132. And to press staff provide an update on the contingency fund, and we have provided that update to the council.
Yes, we've received that, and so looking for a motion.
Make a motion for further discussion?
Councilor Freely moves to support for further discussion, is there support?
I'll support Mayor.
Support by Councilor Baraboo, so it's been moved and supported to adopt the resolution approving the MECC change order number PC012-1 for soil corrections at the West Lot Building, Ring Road, and Plaza in the amount of $134, I'm sorry, in the amount of $134,132, and providing an update here for further discussion before we approve it for final payment. And further discussion, Councilor Freely?
Just real quickly, I mean, at that meeting, I did discuss the possibility, or I asked what kind of fill was going to be used, and the engineer, Matt Reed, said that it would be sand essentially. And I mentioned the fact that there's an abundance of tachinite tailings in this area that could be potentially accessed to be used as fill, which he said would be perfectly usable in this capacity. And I just wondered if anybody did check, like if sand is $100 and tachinite's $10, would we not have wanted to check to see if tachinite might be an advisable product to use as opposed to the sand? Just, just out of curiosity in terms of potential cost saving.
Okay, looking for an answer from our design team, the architect on the project, Eric Wedge. Eric, welcome to the council meeting, and could you give an update for all of us regarding Councilor Freely's question?
Thank you, Councilor Freely. I'll answer your question as best I can without Matt Reed's expertise here. As we put the contract documents together, we did have a unit price for fill, and at that time, it was based upon the soils engineer's recommendations for the sand. Have we utilized the tailings in the past on other projects? Yes, but we had a soil boring report from Braun InterTech. We also had NTS Evan Johnson from, is your onsite inspector, reviewing the work, and SCH, your city engineer, Matt Reed, reviewing it. And it all came back to the conclusion that the sand was the best fill material for those conditions. Had we changed to tachinite tailings, I can't explain to the group, it is a very doable solution, but we may have ended up with a larger subcut or that. So maybe the, the unit price for the tachinite might have been more economical, but then we might have had to have a thicker base, and I would have to leave that to the soil engineers to really provide that area of expertise. As you know, the weather was changing and has changed dramatically, and we needed to make some decisions very quickly, not, but very professionally with several design team members in those meetings to do ultimately the best product for the city over the longevity of this facility.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Eric, for that clarification. So it's been moved and supported to approve a resolution, change order for the MECC, PCO-, PCO12-1 for the soil corrections of the West Lot Building, Ring Road, and Plaza in the amount of $134,132. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
I apologize for not being here last Tuesday. Did we get what the amount of the contingency that is left? Do we know that number?
It's in your packet.
It should be in the packet.
Okay.
And to date, we have 74% remaining, our amount of our contingency. The beginning of the project was 1,151,141.17. We currently have, if I'm reading this correct, Brian, 853,000 left.
Okay, I see, I see it here, just before 9.18 in the document section. I appreciate that. I missed that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Britt?
Well, Mo from our wastewater treatment plant was present at the meeting to discuss the request for approval of the resolution from TACLA, allowing us to enter into agreement with TACLA Farms for loading, hauling, and applying bio solids to the proposed site, and it was approved.
I'll move to approve that quote from Tachonite Farms.
A Council Freely moves to approve the quote from Tachon- Tackala Farms for the loading, hauling and applying of bio solids to the proposed site. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support.
Support by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Britt?
We did have discussion at the meeting regarding the proposed logos from Lundin Group. The design team did also just met with Lundin Group about the logo for the MEC. Uh, Brian Silver gave an update at the field changes regarding softball and baseball at the Southside Park. The city potentially could be running into an issue this spring with COVID pushing back sports, not having enough fields for Little League and for baseball. It was moved and supported to approve the quote from Iron Oaks Fencing for the installation of a fence at Southside Park Field Three in the amount of $9,979 and using the CARES Act funding for that.
Thank you, Britt.
I'll look at the resolution to approve the quote from Iron Oaks Fencing and also just give kind of a shout out to Ed Farconi, who's, uh, running that business as a graduate of Virginia High School back in the day. I taught with him at Greenway High School back in the day. So congratulations on being rewarded this, uh, quote.
Well, thank you. Moved by Council Freely to approve, uh, the adoption of the resolution to accept the quote from Iron Oaks Fencing for the installation of a fence at the Southside Field Number Three in the amount of $9,979 and using CARES Act funding to, uh, to pay for it. Is there support? Support by Council Freely, I'm sorry, Council Barnzeli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Britt?
Your Matt Reed, our engineer of record from SCH, gave an update on the request that we received from Bugals Construction regarding the change order regarding mobilization on the Bailey's Lake project. Due to some legal issues we are having with some access easements, we had to hold back the project. So Bugals had asked for a request to, um, hold their prices for the bid project, but to ask for a change in the amount of mobilization for $2,500. It was movement supported to approve the resolution for change order number two for the Bailey's Lake Trail Improvement Project in that amount of $2,500.
And they'll have to, uh, demobilize and remobilize in the spring.
Correct. And I do know that Matt is going to ask them to try to get those trees down this year so that we don't run into the white nose bat situation next spring.
Hey, thank you. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion for further discussion quickly.
Uh, Council Freely moves to approve, uh, the resolution, change order number two to the contract with Bugals and Sons for the Bailey's Lake Trail Improvement Project in the amount of $2,500. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
All support.
Support by, uh, support by Council Paulson and Councilor, uh, Bearbo at the same time. Further discussion, uh, Council Freely.
Yeah, just real quick, there, you know, they began that project, uh, and they had dropped all the light standards and there, so there are damaged and fallen light standards that are laying in the grass and somewhat overgrown. Um, Matt Reed said that he was, I didn't want to put a contingency on this, but he said that he would talk to them to have that removed. And then also the concrete foundations from which these were removed have rebars sticking up three, four inches, which could be dangerous to people. It could potentially trip and fall. So I'd like to see those hacked off or removed before the winter starts.
Britt?
Happy to report, I walked it today. The light poles are gone and they did hack off those rebars sticking up.
Well, that's a good thing then. Matt, Matt gets things done quickly. Thank you.
Yes, he did. Yes. So I'm happy to report that has been taken care of.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Britt?
Police chief Nicole Matson attended the meeting and gave us a very good update on the request for new tasers and the evidence management system for the police department. It was moved and supported to authorize entering into a five-year lease agreement for 25 new Model Seven, Model Taser Sevens from the Axon Group for a total dollar amount over the five years of $82,080.
Okay, motion?
I will move the resolution for the five-year lease program for $82,080.
Okay, moved by Council Bearbo and supported by Council Barnzeli. Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson?
One quick question. What happens to the old tasers?
They'll be taken out of service. Uh, old tasers are old, antiquated, outdated and not currently authorized, uh, to be used in the performance of a duty in law enforcement. So these tasers have to be replaced. They have a seven-year life, there's a seven-year lifespan or five-year lifespan and they've had them for seven years right now.
Two of them they'll take back, but most of them.
Well, do we need to take action as their city property to properly dispose of the other ones?
That in a lump sum? Don't normally sell them? We cannot sell them?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure we're disposing of them properly and, but that's not something we have to do here. That happens automatically. Thank you.
Okay, that's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Freely?
I would be shocked if they didn't have a plan for that.
That's a dad joke.
You should be on the Gong Show. Okay, good one though. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Britt?
Additionally, it was moved and supported to approve entering into an agreement for the new digital evidence management system with Etcene LLC in the amount of $6,000 per year.
Moved.
Uh, moved by Council Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council? Council Freely beat you to it. Uh, motion by Council, uh, motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Your Bill Hennessy, our public works director, was at the committee of the whole meeting to discuss the installation of crosswalks, the painted crosswalks along Second Avenue. He had recommended at Fourth Street South and Eleventh Street South. It was moved and supported to approve the placing of those crosswalks at Second Avenue and Fourth Street and Eleventh Street South. And I just want to note that they are already done because weather-changing staff was, ideal conditions were last week and they wanted to get them done immediately.
And I think we discussed that at the committee home meeting, uh, the asset be done expeditiously. So Council Bearbo?
I'll move that we, uh, support those crosswalks at Fourth Street, uh, South on Second Avenue, Eleventh Street South.
Yeah, we formally approve. Is there support?
For, for discussion?
Moved and supported. Further discussion? Council Johnson?
Mayor, I would really like to see us put a flashing crosswalk sign coming into town. Um, there's a spot now where the, um, where there is the, um, speed monitor in there. Maybe we can repurpose the solar portion of that. I, I think that because there's a new crosswalk, there'd be really important, uh, the $1,500, I think is a very good investment in public safety coming off of that, off the highway and at speeds where people come. So I'd like to see that. It needs to be discussed more later, but I would like to see that happen.
Hey, thank you. Moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Steve will put that on a street alley.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Bearbo?
Steve will put that on a street alley, your committee.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, Britt?
Yep. Mr. Hennessy also noted that the city annually enters into a contract for striping with St. Louis County and recommends that we continue for fiscal year 2021. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the maintenance striping program with St. Louis County for the year 2021.
I'll move.
Moved by Council Johnson to approve the striping program with St. Louis County is for 2021. Is there support?
All support. Is there, just quick?
Support by Council Freely for the discussion. Council Freely?
Is there a cost incurred for this or?
Is, I think we budget usually 15,000 for this.
Okay, and that's in the budget, right?
When spring comes, we give them a list of what we think we want done. And we've never historically gone to that dollar amount.
Thank you.
Can't say that that's not going to happen, but that's, historically, we've never gone to that dollar amount.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Britt?
Did receive a request for handicap parking sign at 126 and 128 Fifth Street South and we will be having further discussion at a future meeting. I suspect at Street Alley next week when we have our meeting, we will talk about that.
Very good.
Mr. Matt Reed, our engineer of record from SCH, gave an update on the MinDOT project at Highway 53 and 12th Avenue and 13th Street. He noted that the revised agreement that was at the committee of the whole meeting was regarding a change order to reduce the city responsibility cost to zero, which is the best orders. It was supported, moved and supported to approve the proposed amendment to the cooperative construction agreement with Minnesota Department of Transportation for the MinDOT reconstruction project at Highway 53 and 12th Avenue and 13th South, reducing our cost to zero for that project.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, looking for a motion, Council Bearbo?
Also move that we accept the change over for the Highway 53 and 12th Avenue South interchange at a reduction in cost to zero.
Thank you. It's been moved by Council Bearbo. Is there support? Uh, support by Council Barnzeli. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Britt?
Staff had received a request from the resident at 802 Seventh Street North for a stop sign to be placed at the Eighth Avenue and Seventh Street North intersection. Mr. Bill Hennessy recommended putting the signs at the east-west corners of the intersection and further stated that he was not in favor of a four-way stop. After discussion, it was moved and supported to approve the request for placement of two stop signs at the east and west corners of the intersection of Eighth Avenue and Seventh Street North.
Hey, thank you. Looking for council action? Looking for council action? Looking for council action? Seeing no action, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Britt?
City clerk Pamela Bean presented a list of additional election judges and student election assistants for the 2020 general election. It was movement supported to approve the list of election judges and the student election assistants for the, what's to be a very busy 2020 general election.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, and those, we did name those judges at the, uh, at the committee of the whole meeting, but, uh, we're just going to prove them as a whole at this regular meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Looking for council action on the approval of the election judges?
I'll move the approval.
Uh, moved to approve by Council Freely. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Uh, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Britt?
2017, we were approached by the First Apostolic Church Lutheran congregation in the Midway regarding the purchase of approximately one acre of land that we own in, on the Midway school development site so that they could develop their parking lot. We worked out some title issues in the last three years and we finally have the purchase agreement ready for the council to sign. Purchase agreement is in your packet. It was moved and supported to approve that purchase agreement with the First Apostolic Lutheran congregation for the purchase of a parcel of land in Midway.
And the amount is? $10,000.
I believe it's $10,000.
And, uh, this is the first reading?
This is the first reading.
Thank you. Looking for council action. Council Freely?
I move for further discussion.
Uh, Council Freely moves, uh, the approval of the sale of city-owned parcel up in Midway to the First Apostolic Lutheran Church congregation. Uh, this is the first reading in the, uh, for the $10,000 amount. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Johnson. Further discussion? Council Freely?
My only concern would be that there has been talk of potential further development in that area, the old Midway school site. And we also own property up the hill from there, I understand. And it appears to me that the 1.0 acres that we would be, um, for, uh, selling to the church cuts across the entryway into that property. The Laurentian Drive would be cut off from access and entry into that area, from what I see. So that would be concerning to me if we were to develop that area further to the south if we didn't continue to have control of that access way off of Laurentian Drive, if, if I'm seeing that correctly on the map.
That's not a very good map. There really is a spot. We have a plan that I did not include in here that I will get for the second reading that shows how the road could go through, all the way through to Borgon Road.
There's enough room to bypass that boundary.
Yes, back in 2017, when we talked about, when we originally discussed this, we had ensured that, that if this line was developed, we at least had the connection to make the Borgon Road connection also, as well as Laurentian Drive, so you could go through.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Council Freely. Okay, moved and supported. Uh, is there any further discussion? Once again, this is the first reading. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Um, city council did review of the proposed lease of vacant land in Alcott Park for AOA for the food forest. They are currently using this land. There was a lot of discussion and we will be bringing this back to the next committee of the whole meeting. The of the whole then closed the meeting, closed the meeting for a discussion regarding a request for purchase of city-owned property located at 506 Fourth Street South. It was moved and supported to table that request for further discussion on potential development in that area.
So coming out of the meeting, uh, the reformer motion made at the committee of the home meeting was to table the request for a resident to purchase the property located at 506 Fourth Street South for further council discussion on the potential development in that area. That was tabled. It's tabled, so, yeah, so we're good.
Well, unless we want to go back to the items with the A Street.
Well, uh, once we didn't get any action, uh, can we revisit it? Brian, I, I, I don't, we'd, we'd have, we'd have to go back and, uh, discuss it again, would we not? Uh, Brian?
Correct. I think the, the more appropriate thing to do would be to move it forward to another agenda and, and raise the issue once, once again.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Brian, very much. Okay. Uh, any other items on your, uh, agenda?
Other items, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to item number 10, which is Commissioner Liaison and Department head reports. We'll go to the city council first. Uh, one moment. Council Freely?
A question on the tabling of Q. The tabling was for the request of the purchase of the property, but, but we were going to have further discussion with regard to that. You can't combine the two?
Well, it, we tabled it to come to this committee meeting, uh, to the council meeting. It was tabled, so we have to bring it, uh, back to another committee of the home meeting for further discussion.
Thank you.
Which we will do at the next committee of the home meeting.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Liaison and Department head reports. We have one, uh, over to my left, Council Bearbo. I would imagine it's the Department of Public Utilities report. I believe you've passed out some documents to us and, and the.
The documents aren't for the initial, uh, report, uh, from the public utilities. The first, uh, report is going to be, uh, yesterday they had a strategic, uh, planning session and they also went over the three, uh, public utility outages that we've had in the last, uh, few weeks here. First outage was, uh, caused by a contractor hitting the main 306 tie line to Minnesota Power. So that was the first outage. They spliced that line, uh, back to, together, tested the relays, tested the breakers. Uh, this had to be done by, uh, Saginaw Power because of the voltage that's in, in that line. It's 23,000 volts and our crews cannot monkey with that kind of voltage. Uh, so that was the first outage. Second outage was a failure on the same 306, uh, tie line, uh, to Minnesota Power. The origin, the origin was thought to be on the MPC side of the line, but extensive testing didn't show where that outage actually was. So it's the same type thing. They redid all the testing and all the stuff, put it back in service. Uh, in the meantime, uh, we had a third outage and this again was attributed to the 306 tie line to Minnesota Power. And they did do some correction steps on this one. They, they took the load that goes through that line and they shifted to two other substations, PNH and Ridgewood. And they're going to have some, uh, permanent things there. They got to do some more work on that. This, however, was attributed to, uh, a, the Minnesota Power side. I found out today, this afternoon, I was given a call, um, and it tripped a breaker on the Minnesota Power, uh, side on this one. They're going to be going through, uh, all the lines and stuff and looking at them with aerial. They're going to be going through all the lines and stuff and looking at them with aerial lists, both Minnesota Power and Virginia. They're going to look at all, make sure there's no trees and stuff in the way on this line going across, and also to make sure all of the insulators don't have any cracks and stuff, because this can cause a problem also. Going back a little bit, they're going to shift, so the only things in an outage now on that three oh six line that may happen is going to be the power plant, the water plant, P U C offices, so they can trace where this is happening. But they are going to replace, totally, two hundred feet of the underground part of the zero six tie line, they're going to replace the breaker and do more extensive testing on all the relays and stuff. This work will be done by Saginaw Power due to the high voltage. These steps should solve the outages to the city that happened in the succession on that. So that's the update on that, and our utilities are starting this process already, looking at this, and Minnesota, Minnesota Power is going to be a partner in taking a look on this. So this should not, hopefully, once they're replaced, they're going to put all new underground cable and stuff in the portion that was supposedly bad. But there, but it doesn't necessarily mean it came from the underground, it could have come from the overhead portion that was hit by, with all these high winds or something else. So they're going to be checking all that out by looking at every pole, every line and everything on the way. So that is happening.
Well, I have a quick question about that. I mean, I did get, I'm sure maybe some of the other councils have received, I, I received a, a lot of telephone calls regarding the outage and, and not only concern, but frustration and, and, and a little bit of anger from some of the residents, particularly the business owners who were significantly impacted, not once, not twice, but three times by this. So I think, I know the Department of Public Utilities is working diligently to get it done, but this got to be corrected. This kind of outages on a regular basis can't, you know, continue to occur with, you know, with a significant impact and pressure on the businesses that we have so far. You know, they, they need every dollar they can get and they, they were out of, out of business for a long time. So it's, it's good to know that the Department of Public Utilities, which is not an entity that the city council has control over, will take care of this based upon your report and the information they had at that meeting. So thank you, Councilor Bearbo.
Well, let me just finish, Mayor.
Yeah, please do.
And if these breakers did not trip, they could cause extensive damage, it might have been days or, or more than a week to fix, but these breakers tripped. So that, that is the important portion of this, that the safeguards were in place and those crews came out on Sunday, which was the last outage, and they had this done in less than two hours, the repair on that, because they knew where it was this time. But they are going to replace everything, it's going to be a big cost, hundreds of thousands of dollars to the utilities to replace this. So they're doing their due diligence, I have to give them credit for that.
Yep, thank you.
Not to, not to, not to say that these probably shouldn't have happened, but it was a combination of three different things, contractor written a line, then it going out, and then M P side, the third one was out, so it was a combination of three different unfortunate things that happened all over the same period of time. Now, I have some more from the utilities. I gave you three sheets tonight. The first sheet that should be on top is the status on the south side with the contractors, what they have left to do, how many residents and stuff they have left to do, with some comments on, on this for the council of where they are, and most of these look like they can be finished, if not, they will provide alternate heating until they get their work done in some of these, but you can read all these, and there's ninety-one of these in this deal here, and there's another thirty-one that are winterized. So totally had on one of the sheets, you saw it was one hundred and thirty-seven, that sheet is not totally up to date. And then the second sheet is an email that was received from the League of Minnesota Cities, showing that the utilities did everything that was in their power for this whole thing, and that they did everything right, and there's a statute that covers them in, in Minnesota law that does this, and they did every procedure properly because they got an opinion from the League of Minnesota Cities. So that's what that email is all about. And the last one is just a newsletter that's going to be going out for October, so it's just for updated information, they got the street plans and other things on there. If anybody has any questions on this, this is for your information, and it will be come out with a newer update here very shortly on the status of the, of the south side before October thirty-first.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Bearbo. First we'll go to Councilor Biondich. Uh, Councilor Biondich?
Thank you. And I appreciate you explaining a lot of those outages, Mr. Bearbo, is, I'm sure all of us received quite a few phone calls in frustration and anger, and I know it's beyond a lot of our control, but I do appreciate you addressing what happened with each one so we can relay it back to the parties that were calling us. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Just for information...
Thank you, Councilor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilor Bearbo.
No, I was just going to say that the information sheets on the utilities that I just talked about are on your desk here, so you can pick them up. I just got the finalization, so I had them copied today for the meeting tonight, but you will have them on your desk here at the council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Council Johnson?
I appreciate the information here, and I guess some other information I would like, this does not indicate how many of these contractors have said, "No, I'm not doing any more this year." It does not indicate how many of these contractors have not returned phone calls of people who are looking for services. And I just want to make that clear, that there are still people struggling to do this. And I got a phone call the other day from one of the homeless housing people in, on the Iron Range, with a very serious concern that her, a family of eight and then potentially two or three other residents in the garage apartment, were notified this week that at the end of the month there would be no heat in their home as, as renters. And I'm, I'm very concerned about that. These people don't know what they're going to do, they're renters, they are, obviously they're working with a, a case manager to help them. I asked that those folks email me the details so that I could forward them to whomever needs to know, but I'm very concerned, and I will state this again, that on November first, the incidence of fires in Virginia due to inefficient or inadequate heating are going to go way up. Houses, rental properties, specifically, there could be a home of three or four apartments that's been converted on four or five screw-in fuses, and you can only put one small space heater on a fuse. And I can say that, speaking for my house, that four of my, three of my bedrooms were all on the same fuse before my conversion. And I, I just, I'm very concerned about the rental market and, and the folks, the landlords who have said, "Yep, we're taking care of it, don't worry about it." And November first, we're going to see some problems, we're going to see people, less fortunate people, without a voice, being either in the cold, literally, or their personal property and their safety being compromised because of the temporary solutions that are being given. So I, I know the utilities is doing their best and they can only do what they can do with the information they have, but I just need us to be very aware that there are still concerns about heating from renters on south side. And, and when I do get those, that information, I will definitely be forwarding it both to Britt and to Greg, so that we can start getting those, those challenges solved before they become emergencies. Thank you for the update, Councilor Bearbo.
Yeah, that information should also go to our fire marshal, Steve, if you see any of those type issues and they can get on these landlords, utilities, don't go into homes to do this, this is up to our departments to do the inspections that we have. This is another reason to get this rental code stuff done that we've been sitting on and don't have it done yet, because of situations like that, so we need to push a little bit harder on that, Steve. With, with that though, I think utilities from what they're doing with the steam conversions, they've pwned it on doors, they've sent letters, they've sent registered letters, they've sent people out to the homes. So they've done about six different methods of trying to get a hold of people they can't get a hold of for this conversion, but this is the most up-to-date list that they have right now from the contractors. They will have the other listed you saw, more up-to-date, the one with the color codes, but they haven't completed that yet. There's one hundred and thirty-seven on that list, and there's about a hundred and, over a hundred now that they've got confirmed, and that includes the thirty-one that are winterizing for winter and will do their services next year, because they're not here in the winter months.
Okay, thank you. Council Freely?
Yeah, this is probably way after the fact, but I think it's worth at least mentioning, like, I had a, actually, it was a contractor that said, "You should need to look up Laurentian Energy Authority and do some reading about that if you're questioning why you're having to do the conversion on the two properties that you have." And the only thing that I found was on the Landscape Arboretum website of the University of Minnesota, and it discusses here, it says, "Laurentian Energy Authority, Hibbing, Virginia, Minnesota. The Laurentian Energy Authority is a joint venture of the Hibbing and Virginia Municipal Public Utilities. In two thousand and seven, it began burning wood, coal, and natural gas in coal-firing wood boilers to produce steam heat for the two towns. For the next twenty years, it is mandated to use an average of seventy-five percent woody biomass." So I'm kind of confused as to why, in such a short time after the fact, that was eliminated as a mandated expectation on the part of those paying customers for the utilities, that the biomass went away thirteen years prior to its contract ending. I mean, and whether I have this factual or not, it's just, it's, I'm wondering why that, I was seeking information way back when, if you recall, as to what kind of assistance the residents of Virginia could get beyond the zero percent that they were afforded, and really never got the answers as to why we're at that point where the biomass project was now going away despite the fact it was only a few years into it. And we, as the public, had invested in that with the expectation that over the next twenty years, we were going to not have our steam turned off because it had gone to this biomass project. So I'm still a little bit confused, I know it's way after the fact, I'm already pretty much completed with the two projects that I have on the buildings I'm at, but I never really felt like I got all the answers I was seeking from the questions that I had, and maybe I wasn't asking the right questions or didn't have the right information from which to ask those questions, but I'm still a little bit confused and a little bit perturbed about the money that I had to invest in a hundred and fifteen-year-old properties when I didn't anticipate having to make that kind of investment at this point in time in my life. Just a point of fact, not of any point of argument.
Well, I think this warrants some more information to you and the rest of the council that can pass on to the citizens. It was a complicated process, I'm going to let Councilor Bearbo give a little bit of an answer, but it was the Axon Energy Agreement with the P P A about biomass and buying from certain communities throughout the state of Minnesota, Virginia happened to be one of them, way back when, when the L E A was formed, it has, they decided they're going to board wood chips instead of garbage or turkey waste, like they did in some of these other places, as biomass has had, had a myriad of challenges and problems moving forward, both on the Hibbing end and the Virginia end, and the ability to produce the energy and meet the requirements of the P P A agreement with the state of Minnesota, we couldn't meet those agreements. Axon Energy wanted to buy it out, there's, it was a, it's a big process, I think it warrants a need to have that history behind you, why the P P A was done, and now that the Department of Public Utilities required a mandated steam conversion because the production of steam and cost of steam was so expensive, and then, of course, with the P P A agreement with the biomass, it was bought out by Axon Energy and there's no other process moving forward. But, Councilor Bearbo, you could just give a little bit of a quick update?
Yeah, I'm not going to give much, much, Gary. You can get all that information, and it was done through buyout and state legislation and some other things, how this was done. I don't know all the particulars, but right now they are still burning wood in the wood plant here in Virginia. We're going to continue through the winter months up until March, I believe, that was announced, and they are burning wood, we're still going to continue here in Virginia. Hibbing's plant isn't in as good shape as ours, ours is in excellent shape because they've kept all the updates, so they are still burning wood for the, what's left on the steam.
Just one additional...
Yes, Council Freely?
And we talked about this before, and I do agree, Council Johnson, there are people that are kind of like holding their breath before the valve is turned off, but I, I really, and they have done due diligence, don't get me wrong, Charlie, the Public Utilities has put out plenty of information for people to be prepared to, for the shutting it off, but to shut it off at the beginning of the cold season, I think, wasn't like good foresight. I think they should have shut it off in the spring of the year, like in April or something, so that people wouldn't potentially be left in the cold, literally, but in any event, that's, that's neither here nor there anymore either, but that's what I think, they should have waited till the spring.
And landlords have a fiduciary responsibility to take care of their, their tenants, and it's, it's those small amount of landlords that are taking the responsibility to do what they needed to do at the expense of their tenants. Now the tenants has, that are renters, that are, are low income or, or are having difficulty finding another place to stay, it's, it's, it's a responsibility of the homeowner, the landlord, to make sure that gets and taken care of. If it's your family, privately owns residence, it's different, you can make those adjustments, but when you, when you're renting property and you're renting an apartment to somebody and you have a requirement by a community to comply with the regulation and they don't comply, who suffers? The renter. So, Councilor Barnzeli?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I can explain my knowledge about why they did away with wood burning, but I'd like Councilor Bearbo to, to go right into detail. The reason that they did this, cut off the steam, was the pipes are wore out in this town. They're so old, they can't get any steam to south side.
Yeah, the infrastructure is crumbling.
Yes. Councilor Bearbo?
He's, he just explained it.
Yeah, and the, the, what the, what Carl's talking about is the steam down where he lives, he had to produce ten times as much as to get down to his, and is actually, is required in closer proximities to the power plant because of all the leaks and all the bad piping and stuff, so that's one of the decisions they made why they did this. But if you read this email, you'll find out the legalities of how they were allowed to do that, it's kind of suffix expletory in that email, it came from League of Minnesota Cities, so. I thank you for your time, and I will try to keep you, as I go to these meetings, up to date, they're going to be having another strategic planning session coming up here shortly, and I will attend that also.
Uh, thank you. Let's go, is Councilor Paulson, do you have any questions or comments about the report given by Councilor Bearbo?
Um, thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Bearbo, for the update on the power outages. I think that was extremely helpful for people that had questions and that were asking. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be prudent of us to invite Greg French to the next committee of the whole meeting so that we could point and direct some of the questions that we have to him and maybe help get more clarification or further clarification for the general public as to, you know, the clarification of the biomass, how, how the Minnesota Power comes into play, what is the grid system, you know, just to give a little bit more of an, an explanation, and that maybe Council Johnson could, you know, ask those questions and the council would be able to help facilitate then, or in conjunction with our fire department, some safety measures. So I don't know if that would be prudent, but I, I feel like it would be timely.
Yeah, we could invite the general manager of the Department of Public Utilities, Greg French, to our next committee of the whole meeting. We'll, we'll, so, work on that, Britt. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council Paulson, anything else?
Uh, just one other additional, I don't believe we've had an update from the general manager in a very long time, so I think it, it's warranted.
Okay, we'll work on that. Britt has that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Council Biondich?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anything else, any other questions regarding Councilor Bearbo's report? All right, thank you very much. Any other reports by the city, by a counselor? Any, any, okay. How about our staff? Let's go to our, our staff. Britt, any other updates or any information that, that you want to share at this time? I know we have some meetings coming up with some potential economic development opportunities and updates on the mall project and those kind of things, but anything specific that we need to pass on to the councils and the general public to date? Thank you. Anything on the budget or, or human resources?
Just busy, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I know we have some personnel issues, we're trying to replace some, you know, retirees and, and people leaving, so thank you. Okay, Brian, our city attorney, any updates or information that you'd like to... attorney, any updates or information that you'd like to, to disseminate to us today?
Nothing today, Mayor, but you'll probably be hearing from me next Tuesday at the committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Brian. And Brian, we've given a park and rec update. Do you have anything else you'd like to add moving forward? Brian Silver, our park and rec director?
Not today, but you'll be seeing me again at the committee of the whole meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, all right, very good. Anybody else have anything to come before the council this evening?
Find the council that Amoresco would like to do ribbon cutting and a photo opportunity after the council meeting.
Tonight?
Today.
Okay.
They're waiting outside for us.
Okay, ribbon cutting, moving forward. Also, anything else that would come before? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and G. Rebe will be doing a story on, two stories, one on Amoresco and then one on the Kupla lighting. So this is really a good thing for the city as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other business to come before the council this evening, we will stand adjourned to our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be Tuesday, October 20th, at 5:30 PM right here in the council chambers. Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. Everybody be safe out there. See you next time. Good night.